There we go.
Good afternoon for this very hot sticky July afternoon. My, my name is Raymond Skinner, Chair of the DCHA Stabilization and Reform Board, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority being held today, July tenth, twenty twenty four. This meeting is being held via WebEx video conferencing, and the board is here in person. The time is now one oh four P M. At this time, I would like to add for a moment of silence to allow for some personal reflection. Thanks. This is our regular meeting of the DCH. Members of the public to sign up to speak via our website, or those who would just like to view the meeting can do so live via the DCHA web, website linked to Facebook Live. The Board of Commissioners welcomes constituent inputs on matters of public concern and offers you an opportunity to express your views during the public testimony portion of this meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend meetings via surfing tools to allow it's business. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asks you to remain muted until you are instructed to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any conduct, loud, threatening, or abusive language during these meetings. This includes any loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates the rules will be removed from this virtual. Serious or repeated violations of the DCHA's rules, you'll be barred from speaking in this meeting. Appreciate your interest just before us. Thank you in advance for binding by these rules of conscience. At this time, I'd like to pass forward a roll call to determine.
Sure. Denise Blackson. Rosa Burbidge.
Present.
Libor Clay.
Here.
Jim Dickerson.
Here.
Ronnie Hens. Cassandra Jones.
Here.
Melissa Lee.
Present.
Present.
Jennifer Reed.
Present.
And Teresa Silla.
Present.
Jimmy Neville. And and Chair.
I don't count.
You do count. Chairman Skinner.
Present.
Perfect. You have a form.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like the Commissioners to consider the meetings of two meetings. We had two meetings since, uh, since we last meet, uh, June twelfth, Board of Commissioners meeting and the June twenty seventh special. Are there any comments or changes to the minutes for, for either of those meetings? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? So therefore, the minute stand as presented. Uh, next, we're going to move into the Executive Director's report, and I'll call on Executive Director Pettigrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's sort of good news, even though I know that the denominator's changed, but we continue to work with HUD on these substantial rehab units. They've actually encouraged us to, to pull some things offline because of the, the, averaging these units. And so we're eighty-two percent now. We'll take it. They're extremely happy about it. I know Commissioner Murphy had, had commented on the number and the fact that the denominator is what's sort of driving the increase, uh, but, and then we did indicate, uh, last time and this time that, um, the OCP officer under Jackie has indicated that we will be bringing units back online and, and, and really strong numbers at the end of the month. We confirmed that this morning before the board meeting because I wanted to make sure I can give you guys a straight story. So, uh, I, I don't want to jinx it with the number, but we're looking at a really strong number for the end of January. I mean, July and heading into August, uh, the, the increase will start to rise again. And the good thing about this is, uh, as we pull the other units off and we're working on them, this number should continue to rise. So, um, I'm just excited that we're toward the end of this and making sure these units are safe for residents to be in. And so, as I say, stay tuned, look forward to, uh, September meeting, when I can give you guys hopefully really good numbers. So, uh, but, but we are where we are at this point, particularly because of how we've been out working with HUD to deal with these, these units to be pulled offline. So grateful for that. On the voucher side of the house, obviously, we continue to lease up. We're doing a lot better than I thought we were. We had some numbers updated after the last, uh, uh, board meeting. Commissioner Murphy asked about the number of vouchers that were out there in the street. And, um, so Antonistine went back and filled out the numbers. They changed some pick errors, and so if you can see, you can see that the utilization has increased and that we're doing fairly decent. Uh, we're still tracking timeframes. I know that's been an issue for a lot of people, uh, advocates, residents, uh, everyone in terms of how fast we lease up. So what we recommended that Antonistine begin to do is particularly the group of voucher holders that are in the sixty and higher categories as to why is it that they're struggling to lease up? And I know some of the things have come back so far preliminarily have been some people just wait late. Some people are waiting for their lease to end. So there's a lot of different reasons why, uh, some of the, the, the voucher holders are not leasing up. In addition to the fact that we need to do a better job of connecting up with landlords, um, and, and processing paperwork as well. I know that the team did a landlord, uh, lease up event about a week or so ago. It's another one today, and we're going to continue to be aggressive with landlords and bringing landlords and tenants together, um, so that we can improve, um, uh, and, and the lease up time, uh, for the residents. I had a really good meeting yesterday, Anton and I and his team, with several advocates and several voucher holders. And, uh, it was a really good talk about some of the concerns and challenges that they, they were having. Uh, they liked some of the things that we put in place. Um, and so, uh, what we needed to do was have a, a monthly meeting, uh, with these advocates and with, and with residents that they identified that may be having challenges. Uh, one of the things that I did share with them was obviously the fact that people can find us now in H Street. It's a really good thing. Regardless of whether they have challenges with the mail or what have you, they know where to find us now. And, um, and I've seen an uptick in terms of people where just, just people being happier about where we are. I spent most of my time at seven oh two because that's where the people are. And I talked to some of the residents that come in, and I really appreciate it with the fact that they now can find us, uh, and as well as important landlords to, to keep them informed and then to train them up and to make sure that they know where to find us as well. So I think that we're on the right track. Shaw and his team are starting to get their legs under them a little bit. So hopefully we'll start to see these numbers continue to improve and more importantly, get people housed much faster, uh, as we go forward.
So, uh, when where are you holding the landlord outreach sessions? And how are you reaching out to them? What kind of?
So the last one was at what? Am I okay?
I'm okay.
Okay.
One of these is at the church. We're looking for different locations around the city. Want to make sure we, we make it convenient for landlords as possible.
So what's, uh, you, what's an average attendance?
So the number we had last, the last one we just had, are you talking landlord? Yeah, it just, I think it was seventy-six, I think.
Seventy-six.
That's a good, that's a good number.
So the Cheryl Robinson's team did a very good job. Actually, that's what landlords to come out.
Director, I really appreciate you addressing both issues because obviously they're on my mind. So thank you. I guess one thing I would just ask your team is, as you continue to hear from landlords, what, what concerns me is less the agency and more about sort of structural issues that are out there. To, to some degree, rent reasonableness is an agency issue, but like, I'm just, I'm anxious that there are some, that, that these are being caused by, they're unintended consequences of something. And I don't know what that is yet, but I, I, that's what sort of gnaws at me. And so to the, if you're, if you're picking up themes from landlords and things like that, I think it would be great for the board to understand what those are and potentially even the council, right? I mean, i- if we're, if rent reasonableness is creating real impediments for, for landlords, it's good for us to be public about that so that the blame isn't squarely on us because it's a more complicated problem than that. You know, others, it occurs to me that there are other, maybe other issues that you're, I don't know, thinking about in terms of, um, uh, are landlords anxious because of, they're worried about damage to units and sort of other ways to mitigate those concerns? And so there are those kinds of things that I know you guys are really good about being creative, about finding solutions too, if you hear them. So just to the extent that there may be some of those issues, I'd love to understand more what they are.
And ironically, I have a meeting with one of the landlord associations next week. It's the larger, I forgot the name of the group off the top of my head, but I'll be meeting with them, me and Anton, to talk about some of the concerns they have, some of the issues they've seen, because they've given us some good ideas, like the walk-in day for landlords, uh, the fact that we're starting to train new landlords. Um, I'm almost certain somebody's going to ask me about an incentive program because we've heard about tenants tearing up the units, and then they have to spend a whole lot of money, and then on top of it, they can't even fix the tenant. So a lot of them are disenchanted by this whole process in general. Uh, so we're trying to think about ways to get a little more creative to bring more landlords to the program.
Again, as Commissioner Murphy was saying, some of that is not DCHA's fault, but it's sort of part of the system. You know, and we're a part of that.
The more we can help surface those issues, I think, the better.
Okay, Commissioner Silla had a question or comment?
Um, thank you, Chair Skinner. When I, um, I really appreciate Director and Commissioner Murphy for focusing on the public housing occupancy numbers. In particular, when we're looking at the board book and the details, Director, we see what the HUD approved and other offline numbers are property by property. And especially for those properties where we have as many as half of the units offline, I think it would be very good to add a note as to the particular challenges that you are seeing at the property. I think as, um, you know, we've seen the number of units that are going offline, I think it's essentially tripled since, um, last year around this time. It's really important for us to be documenting what are the challenges that you're experiencing, if they are property specific, or if they are something that is actually germane to, um, most of the D C Housing Authority properties. It would be very, um, helpful and impactful for at least our committee to be able to see that level of detail. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, and we have the detail, so we'll, we'll share it. Because HUD has to get it. We have to give HUD detail too. They won't just accept, accept our word for it. So we'll get it to you.
Actually, to that point, I think it was, I think, two hundred and fourteen more units were taken offline. Is that because of one particular project or?
That I don't know off the top of my head right now.
So it's, a lot of the units were already offline, but not in HUD's system.
They were vacant because they were uninhabitable.
Right. It was, it's a complete cleanup. And some were, for example, the Kennelworth, these non-units, they were already, you know, demolished. They were still sitting there. So it's, it was a lot of cleanup, and then some already, like you said, substantial rehab that had been sitting, they didn't need to come offline. That's what we're working on.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Sorry, it's, it's really helpful to see that documented. And so, um, especially for our committee, it would be helpful to see that kind of detail. It might not be important for the full board meeting, but for our committee, please.
Okay.
So Resident Services, couple of announcements, uh, that I think are worthy of being brought to the public, please. Number one, uh, the, the access scholarship application process. Uh, the agency received a data application, so we're excited about, you know, being able to offer some of these young individuals some funding to go to colleges. And we all know we could always use the money. Uh, so I'm excited about that. And June fourteenth, they had the Father Initiative, which I think is extremely, extremely important for a lot of these young kids. You know, in terms of bringing fathers back to, uh, these kids' lives and, and trying to do problematic activities for folks as we tend to. As we try now to rebuild these communities. Uh, the Speaker of Rebuilding Communities, we had our first event, uh, June twenty second at Detroit, Kelly Miller. It was a very hot day, but actually it was a wonderful event. I want to thank Commissioner Seeler and Commissioner Blackson for coming out. Obviously, they stole the show with all of the photos. But, uh, we had a wonderful time, and, and I think, uh, obviously there's more to come, but it's just good to see people now connecting again. Because as, I think it'll be eight months, now maybe nine months, but one of the things that I noticed when I walked these properties is that there's not a lot of neighborly interaction. Uh, and so one of the things that we're trying to do with this, and this is just a start, is just getting people back out and, 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 and communicating with each other and, and seeing each other again. And obviously, hopefully, these events will start to build, rebuild their trust so they know that we care about them as well. You know, we bought a bunch of vendors there with services. Uh, the kids had a great time. I had a better. Uh, and the next event, obviously, is this Saturday at Greenleaf. So it's going to be Greenleaf, James, Peter, and Syfax together. Uh, we're extremely excited about it. I mean, the food was great, uh, and it was just a wonderful time. So if you all can make it out, even for a little bit, I think you're going to enjoy the atmosphere. It was, it was really electric. And Kelly, I was just wondering if we're hoping to have the same vibe at Greenleaf, um, with, with a much bigger contingency of services out there, um, for the residents to enjoy themselves and the kids to have fun. Other than that, I think the other stuff's pretty straightforward, the procurements that we have going on as we continue to get things done. Uh, I want to touch on the security upgrades of Potomac Gardens going along. It should be completed in August, and obviously, we continue to replace doors and properties that receive a Syfax, as well as for the terraces, some work being done there. So, Syfax, any other questions? Hopefully, I can answer for you guys.
Question, Director, that is, how are we doing? How are our buildings and our HVACs?
Yeah.
It's very hot.
It is, and it's a challenge. You know, so it's funny, when, when did we walk the warehouse? That was about several months ago, and we saw all of these A C units. They scored about seven thousand of them, but all these blue boxes were sitting. Okay, so, so we were trying to deploy those. Evidently, we had some challenges with some of the properties because of the wattage, and they, they can't handle them. We didn't know that. I mean, you know, obviously, we'd have heard of the unit. So we're trying to do the best, best we can to get some things done. But it's a challenge. I got to, and we're still trying to find ways to just keep people. Issuing those, um, some people love them, some people don't. So I did talk to Jackie this morning, and I know her about looking at purchasing some other ones since these don't work for other places. Uh, but we didn't know that obviously until they started, they started, um, installing them.
So a resident, if they're, feel like their unit is too warm, can reach out and request one of these units? Okay.
But we're trying to be proactive now, since we've gotten word about it. We got word about it, I guess, about a month or so ago. Uh, I think Commissioner Blackson had written me about, um, someone, oh, in Greenleaf. Uh, it was a hot day, and so I worked with, uh, PMO and say, listen, let's get these things out. Put a schedule together and start issuing, um, so we can help try to take care of people. Also, what we like to do is try to set up cooling centers around the properties too. So, you know, so we've been talking to them about setting up these cooling centers in certain units that we know may be vacant for a minute, just to cool people down. You know, I know they have other cooling centers around the city, but if we can take a unit or two on the property, particularly larger properties, where we can make one of those units a cooling center, I think that'll be, that'll help too as well.
And are the, the senior only or some majority senior buildings, do those mostly have central air? Or are we, can we like focus on those buildings to start with the A C units? Just thinking about who's most vulnerable in the heat?
Well, we'll, we'll take a look at them. I don't know of all, uh, which ones have central air now off the top of my head, but we'll find out. But seniors, I love the seniors. So, you know, they're, they're my favorite population. They're the most responsible. And then keep me involved, number two. Keep us in line, number three. So we'll take care of seniors.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Silla, did you have another question?
I actually wanted to, um, reflect a little bit on the, uh, community event that, um, um, Director Pettigrew reported out on. Um, I really wanted to thank him and his team. The event was, um, uh, very well planned, very well attended. I really appreciated the number of, um, uh, district, um, agencies that were involved. I saw DPR out there. I saw DBH, um, and a lot of, uh, their service providers. Uh, there was plenty of naloxone, uh, and Narcan available for distribution. But especially, I wanted to thank, um, Director Pettigrew for the, um, for his team. I noticed, um, we were, uh, you know, uh, in public space, um, and his team was very receptive and kind and welcoming and warm to people experiencing homelessness in the area and made sure that they were, um, included and fed. And, um, I just really appreciated the spirit and the collaboration, the, the neighborliness that he was, that he has been talking about. To see it in action was, um, uh, it was quite remarkable. So I just wanted to applaud the director on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions for the director?
No, that, no, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is the resident testimony. So, uh, each resident will have, uh, three minutes to provide testimony, and you can talk about any issues, uh, that's on your mind. I think, uh, any comments you may have.
Great. So the first resident that we have is Davida Akerson.
Hello.
Yep, I can have you. Go ahead, Ms. Akerson. You have three minutes.
Okay, so yes, I've, it's been hard to get in contact with housing or is it hard to get in contact with your specialist? And it's like every time you go through different phases, like you get connected to a different person, and then you're not, or don't realize that you're dealing with a whole different person. And then when it comes to them responding back to you, it takes a long time. Like, I emailed Ashley on July the second, and she just responded to my email today. It's just a time fashionally matter of when they return your emails and the fact that you have to connect too many people for stuff to get done. Like, I had to go on and sign up for board meetings for everything to get passed on and to get things pushing. I was applying for apartment back in November, and I didn't move in till May. That's extremely too long for a process for things to get moving. And then when no one can actually answer any questions, when you call in the five-three-five number and you're actually on hold for like an hour and a half, almost two hours, for somebody to tell you they can't answer your question and they have to send you to your case manager, but, or your specialist, but your specialist don't respond to you. And the other issue I had is with my calculations of where I just moved in at. I've been getting a lot of different calculations, and at the end, that was not what my calculation was. And then Ashley, she explained to me that was an estimate, but when me and her was talking, that's, she didn't say an estimate because I would have understood an estimate. But it, it's just a whole lot of lack of communication when it comes to dealing with the clients. Like, I don't want to do everything through an email. I want to sit down with somebody like you used to be able to do and explain stuff to them. And I know you guys are moving from building to building, but some people still need that one-on-one to have a better understanding of everything that's going on. So when they get to that point of moving in, it's not like a whole lot of frustration because I've had a whole lot of frustration with this move, even with my briefing. The lady told me that I didn't need to give my landlord thirty-day notice, and then three weeks before I'm about to move in, I, I'm told that I need to give a thirty-day notice. So it's just a lack of communication when it comes to the lease-up packet for me. And I've never had these issues before, and I've been a voucher holder for a long time. But this move has been a very difficult or just a lack of help or assistance when it comes to communicating with the client of what they need from me.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Akerson. Uh, Director Pettigrew, the, the office location again, address is?
Yeah, Ms. Akerson, uh, we're located at seven oh two H Street Northwest, right down in Chinatown. So you can come see us five days a week.
And that was another thing I had. Sorry to cut you off. I scheduled an appointment online to do an in-person visit. That's how I wound up talking to Mr. Waller. And when I got to the building at three o'clock, they said that they were closed. The appointment was scheduled for three o'clock. So if your building closes at three, then your in-person visit shouldn't be, you shouldn't be able to schedule an in-person visit online at three o'clock.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll have to follow up on that. That should not happen there. Okay, thank you, Ms. Akerson. Next.
Yep, next we. Thank you. We have Danielle Ford. Danielle Ford, and as a reminder, if you're on mute, it is star six to unmute once I call your name. Danielle Ford.
I'm going to move on.
Next, we have former Commissioner Kenneth Council.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff.
Good afternoon.
I'm speaking on the twenty-four, twenty-eight fiscal year move to work plan. Going over it and reading it back and forth, I'm finding out that it looks like the whole portfolio is being axed one time to turn everything into a red or eighteen or chaps. That way, you don't have to return back to HUD. You can just go ahead and turn the, the, the buildings over to whatever developer that you want to do. It needs to be some checks and balances. I know, uh, PERSO Taxes have done it, but they're smaller than what we are. So I'm hoping you all don't pass that to do the whole portfolio at one time. That way, you all need checks and balances. And going over and reading the recovery plan, I find it so strange that the Audit and Compliance Office is not included. That's the checks and balances, what we would call the integrity. They would check you all to make sure you are in compliance and not doing anything illegal. But I don't see it either in that plan. And it's been posted. How? How can you put an audit and compliance in your building, but you're not utilizing it and it's not in your recovery plan? I don't see how that can be. I have, um, an address that I've asked several times for you all to look at that's full of mold that said, "Started Terrace, two-five-three-thirty-seventh Place." It's an ADA, and this has gone over a year that they've been living in mold. This is not the first time that I've asked you all to look at it. Not to mention, there are some issues, and I believe, uh, Director Pettigrew know of it, but I don't know if he's physically been there, eleven R Street. There's some issues still in that building from it being burnt, as well as empty vacancies too. So if you all could look into that, and I see up here for the first time a resolution for the twenty-four-dash-twenty-three anti-fraud policy. That's needed because it's a lot going on, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, former Commissioner. Next, we have Regina Rivers.
Hi. Hi, I'm Regina Rivers. And, um, I've been a voucher holder since, uh, twenty-ten. And my specific thing that I want to address is about the Housing Choice Voucher Payment Standard. I had a, uh, had applied for apartment. I was right, I was under the payment standard and, um, supposed to move in March first, um, to a, a, a two-bedroom. And that never happened because I was told that the offer that, um, my housing specialist sent over, that the, the new, um, the new landlord. my housing specialist sent over, that the, the new, the new landlord didn't send them another offer back. And so my case was closed and I ended up having to look for another apartment. And then within that time that I was waiting for the two-bedroom, my mom passed away. And so I had to go back and start back onto a one-bedroom. So before I do that, I needed some more verification on the, the payment standard. I'm not understanding, you know, the ins and outs of it. I talked with Mr. Waller yesterday and he tried to explain it to me. But some of the things he was saying that I shouldn't, I don't have to know these things and they don't concern me, but I don't understand why I, they don't concern me and why I don't have to know. And I, I, I just don't understand the whole payment standard situation. That's my, that, that's my, that's my problem.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rivers. We can have someone follow up with you directly, one-on-one to explain that for you.
Thank you.
Next we have Paulette Matthews. As a reminder, it's star six, so you can unmute yourself. Paulette Matthews. I can come back. Next we have former Commissioner Aquarius Van Gossery. I'm moving forward. Next we have Patricia Bishop. Ms. Bishop, I see you online. Star six to unmute. Ms. Bishop, if you're speaking, you're still muted. See you.
She didn't hear you, I don't think.
Yeah, we, okay. Yeah, Ms., Ms. Bishop, if you can hear us. It looks like she's talking.
She is talking.
Okay, okay, so she might not hear us on her side. So I can come back. Let me move forward. Donna Towns. Donna Towns. Before I move forward with the non-resident, I'm gonna come back to Paulette Matthews. And Patricia Bishop. She's having some technology issues. I see that. This is full cheap straight. So I will, I believe Carla and Barbara are both listening in. If you all can reach out to Ms. Bishop and we can come back to her. Moving forward, I'm going to the non-resident, Patrice Evans. Perfect, Ms. Evans.
I'm sorry.
Is this Ms. Evans? Okay, Ms. Evans, you have three minutes to book your testimony.
Do it now? Okay, um, basically, I would like to talk about I am the president of the Moutown and Triangle View Senior Building. We have a lot of concerns about our security and especially the level of the qual, the quality of management from the management company. And they're not following our DC tenants' rights. And I want DC Housing to enforce those rights. And I can speak to anyone one-on-one about the specific issues like mice infestation and things like that. But the, the developers have sent in management that is totally unqualified, disrespectful and unfriendly. And that's basically, and because of that attitude and, and they're consistently leaving and not communicating with us, we've lost the level of trust. Recertifications and, and other paperwork and things just get dropped because they don't even communicate with each other. A manager just left. We find out through another manager. They raised the prices of this. They start charging us for that. There, and, and security is non-existent. Okay. Just tried to sum up in a few minutes our main concerns and I think enforcement of the DC tenant rights need to be addressed and making these land, landlords be responsible for their buildings and enforce those with fines, make them pay their fines. We pay, have to pay ours on time or we, or something happens definitely if we don't. The same thing needs to happen with them.
Okay, I'm unmuted, but I'm scared to mute myself.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Bishop, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to speak on the move to work because I've read as best as I could with understanding it. But my main concern about that, if we're gonna do section eight red or whatever, by this being public housing buildings, all utilities was included. It just does not happen when it's turned over to these type of section eights or reds. People are becoming, want to become homeless, that I believe that it's gonna happen because you cannot afford to pay the bills. We already have a problem with being able to afford the third, the thirty, zero to thirty that we are fighting hard to pay and keep. But if we get the utility bill, that's gonna be even more harder on us. So please take that in consideration and I appreciate all that y'all are doing to help and I look forward to the event Saturday. Hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
Next we have Tawana Sellers. I'm moving forward. Next we have Tracy Johnson. Next we have Rebecca Lynn Hurst.
Good afternoon, I'm here. I couldn't find the unmute button. Thank you all for this opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Rebecca Lynn Hurst. I'm an attorney at Bread for the City. For those of you who are unfamiliar with Bread for the City, we provide food, clothing, medical care, legal and social services to reduce the burden of poverty. And we seek justice through community organizing and public advocacy. I oversee Bread for the City's housing law practice, which includes assisting tenants who are facing eviction. We also work with tenants who live in public housing and are facing displacement through redevelopment. I've worked with tenants in the district for over twenty years. In that time, I've worked closely with each executive director in an effort to improve conditions in public housing, create systems that are navigable for residents and participants who interface with DCHA. Improve customer service through consistent feedback and navigate redevelopment for tenants facing displacement from their properties. I hope that we can continue to collaborate in ways that benefit public housing residents and voucher holders. I applaud Mr. Pettigrew, Director Pettigrew for engaging with us on a regular basis, giving advocates an opportunity to discuss various issues that arise. I have a couple of comments today on resolutions. The first is the vouchers for the thirteen hundred families exiting the FRSP program. In my mind, this is a bailout of a failed policy. And I think we are sweeping in to save DHS from something that is very, looks really bad politically and my concern is that there are thousands of people on the DCHA waiting list for vouchers have been on the waiting list since the mid-two thousands and now are moving further back in line behind these thirteen hundred families. I don't begrudge these families at all. And I want them to be housed. I think that requiring DCHA to sweep in and save the day is really concerning. And I think the mayor is pushing this in a way that is unfair to the residents who are on the waiting list. I'm also concerned that DC, DCHA continues to use the emergency regulatory process improperly. This is not an emergency under the DC Administrative Procedures Act. Plus, federal law requires a particular process for changing preferences. So it needs to be issued as proposed regulations, give thirty days for comment and then publish final rules. It's just, it's frustrating that DCHA continues to publish things as emergency regulations when they don't fit as emergencies or don't qualify as emergencies under the Administrative Procedures Act. I will say again, emergency regulations are or emergency steps are being taken regarding the starboard. What troubles me most is that we still have no commissioners on the board who are residents or participants. These voices are needed and I hope that there is some reconsideration of who is sitting on the board. And I'll close with comments around redevelopment. My first client when I started practicing twenty-two years ago was a public housing client living in Arthur Kapper who was being displaced because of redevelopment. She has never returned and we have never replaced all of the units. DCHA is still some three hundred units behind twenty years later in Hope Six property. And so it's that concern about this client and so many others who suffered from botched redevelopment, broken promises. Each new director swears they're gonna do better, but we've learned so many lessons. The moving to work plan and that sweeping portfolio-wide repositioning with virtually no public attention, input or stakeholder consultation. Repositioning seven thousand nine hundred, nine hundred and thirty-seven public housing units, almost the entire portfolio without meaningful input, consultation or oversight from the council, community-based organizations or most, and most importantly, public housing residents. This is a seismic change that's gonna have permanent repercussions on the future of affordable housing in the district.
Has expired, but you definitely can submit your testimony, any further testimony written, but we have to move.
Do you guys address that? Yeah, just clarify that we do have three residents on the board, two of which are here today. I just want to make sure for the public.
My point, my point, Commissioner, is that they're not voting members of the board. They are merely there for show and cannot vote.
She's not a resident. She's a voucher holder, former voucher holder. Okay, yes. Okay, we need to move.
Yep, not a problem. Next we have Daniel Del Tealiego.
Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Del Tealiego with Empower DC. I've got a couple of comments to, to share. I, I, as Rebecca Lynn Hurst pointed out, we are very concerned about this move to give a leg up to folks, you know, exiting that program to receive vouchers. I speak to voucher holders every day who are, you know, trying desperately, who are on that list, who are saying, my name came up and I, you know, I need to get, so I understand how many people are waiting a voucher and, and that having to essentially take, you know, be bumped back in line. I think it's just not fair or equitable. Once again, this is not to begrudge those folks in, who are losing their rapid rehousing subsidy. But this just, it, it's just not good. And, and once again, it's calling this agency that has so much to fix and so much to work on to fix now another agency's problem and the mayor's problem. So definitely would, don't want to see that move forward. I want to make some comments on the recovery plan. We've been speaking with some tenants about the recovery plan. And I think we're thankful in general that, you know, this, under the Director Pettigrew's leadership, there is some recognition and admission to the faults that ail this agency and the willingness to move forward and work on it. So that is well received and we hope, you know, we'll be looking at it more and we'll be providing input. I believe the document asks for input. It's a living document, so we will certainly be providing input on, on the on this document. A couple of the things that we heard and concerns are a major one. And I think former Commissioner Council mentioned this is the fact that the Audit and Compliance Department is, is not included in the plan. We're just wondering why, why this oversight, why it's not in there, given the important work that this department does and that has caught a lot of issues. Could have really put this agency in, in much more jeopardy than it, than it is. So we're hoping that it is included in there and, and that we see what the plan for, for that department is. The plan also kind of lays out a couple of big decisions, like the repositioning of all the properties, you know, changing the subsidy. That's just a lot, I think, for residents to, to digest and understand fully. I don't think a plan for that has come out, like what will that actually look like and entail? And we've had these conversations, you know, last month, but I think it's a little irresponsible to put these things forward when there isn't, you know, substantive engagement and more information for residents to really be, to really understand what it, what it is. The other piece that we heard from residents is like, this just sounds like this is what you all need to be doing, should be doing. So, you know, take that with a grain of salt. It, 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 it really is what y'all need to be doing and should have been doing. And the other piece that I think residents wanted to see as part of this recovery plan is, you know, some actual timelines, like when will this happen? I understand it's a three-year plan. But I think, you know, some timelines would be helpful for residents, resident leaders to hold you all accountable to what you say you're gonna do and what, what are those accountability measures? Right? What happens if you don't meet these goals that you've laid out?
Time is up. But we, we appreciate all of your comments.
Next we have Michael Cohen. Michael Cohen. I see you. Are you able to unmute? It's star six if you're on a mobile device. I'm gonna talk to you. Next, William Jordan.
Good afternoon. I hope everyone is enjoying their summer. Currently, the Move to Work twenty twenty-five Plan and the Three-Year Recovery Plan reminds me of a beautifully designed reminds me of a beautifully designed airplane with great seating, a well-trained crew, a great business plan, and et cetera. But the design does not take into account the force of gravity, wind speeds, and the weight of fuel. In other words, the plane's design is great as long as it doesn't have to leave the runway and fly. In this case, the fuel, the wind, the drive are residents and their families. And this is what will make the plane fly. Design that would rely on self-sufficient, resident self-sufficiency and partnerships is what would make the plane fly. In the Move to Work Plan, in the Move to Work Plan, we still have a 2019 pre-pandemic self-sufficiency plan. What kind of sense does that make? And even in the recovery plan, the director talks about self-sufficiency, removing barriers and all this great statement. But then the plan says, we're going to wait for some miracle funding to make it happen. You know, I really think we have to be a little bit more serious. Then I jump to Park Morton, which is a good example of how this stuff plays out on the ground. Go back to May of twenty-two, when certain things were put in the resolution. The Housing Authority agrees to establish a plan to implement technical assistance structures for Park Morton residents. Didn't get done. A resident management corporation structure for Park Morton residents didn't get done. This is two years ago. A Section Three business plan didn't get done. Establish something tailored for this hundred million dollar Phase One project in Section Three for residents didn't get done. So, you know, and then as a result, we're going to have residents starting to come back. And what I'm hearing is that although a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty-two units are going to be available in this Phase One building, they probably have less than ten applications from Park Morton, former Park Morton residents, right? So this doesn't mean that they didn't want to come back necessarily. This means that the project was built and not fit their needs, although it was promised that it would. Or they're not being communicated with efficiently, which I know is the case, so they can make that choice. So all of a sudden, they have a deadline of the twelfth, and if they don't get it, they go back to the back of the line. And we know that system was not set up in place. The last thing I want to mention about that is we have this unit, this Phase One building, a hundred and forty-two units from a family property. Zero, three-bedroom units were created, one-four. Everything is one-bedroom studios and some two-bedrooms. And if you're using your voucher, most of those two bedrooms will be gone because those are set aside for people who are not using the vouchers. So families need three-bedroom units. Successful families are going to need three-bedroom units. And yet, you all pushed this through. You had a chance to make sure people could come back, didn't do it. You made all these promises. The board was going to approve a plan, and it didn't happen, right? So it's all going to look good on paper. The plane is going to be beautiful, but it will not fly. Because when it came down to the fuel, the resonance, it didn't happen. And, you know, I don't know what to do now. I've been going over this for years and still the same thing when it comes on the ground. The plane looks beautiful, but it won't fly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. I'm going to go back to Michael Cohen. Mr. Cohen, were you able to get your device to unmute? Perfect.
Yes, I'm all set. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Michael Cohen. I'm an AMC Commissioner for Single Member District 4B07. 4B07 includes parts of Manor Park, Tacoma, and LeMond in Ward Four. I'd like to state here that I'm representing my own single district, not AMC 4B as a whole. I'm here today to elevate concerns that my LeMond constituents have raised with me, specifically related to an area in the LeMond neighborhood. The area in question includes sixty-three hundred and sixty-four hundred blocks of North Capitol Street and nearby local streets. This is a neighborhood where there's a pattern of property owners who have come into the neighborhood, bought properties, fixed them up, and leased them to tenants who behave with no regard for the community. These landlords then disengage from the community, only making themselves available in the future to collect an overpriced check once a month. Over the past year and a half, I've witnessed the condition of this neighborhood deteriorate significantly. This deterioration is not due to a lack of neighbors maintaining their homes. It's not due to worsening economic conditions, and it's not due to a failure of DC agencies to perform tasks like cutting grass or paving the roads. Instead, it's due to actions and behaviors. A few families who are new to the neighborhood and who are wreaking havoc on the community. This havoc has come in the form of weekly fights and altercations in public space, involvement of weapons, including firearms being present in those fights, unsupervised children breaking into houses and causing fights in public spaces, and numerous, numerous other quality of life issues. Here are just a few of the comments that I've received from dozens of neighbors, both new and longstanding in the community. One, I feel like a prisoner in my own home. Two, how can one or two families be allowed to terrorize an entire neighborhood? The term terrorize seems to come up over and over again. Three, there are ice weapons, parking violations, trash, et cetera, every time I look around. How am I supposed to live like this? These complaints revolve around a few families who've moved into the neighborhood and broken the social contract that exists in a community. It's widely known that these specific families are part of the voucher housing program, a fact that they, that these families often even disclose and brag about to neighbors. We've held community meetings, walkthroughs, appealed to agencies, and we're constantly calling 311 and 911. Despite these efforts, the core issues remain. The individuals causing these problems seem to have more power than the overall community. I'm here today to ask you to reconsider this dynamic. Here's what I'm asking DC Housing Authority for on behalf of my constituents. These are requests that have come up from constituents in meetings that I've collected and pulled together for you. My constituents are asking that you hold your tenants accountable for their actions. My constituents are asking that you give community members the ability to submit concerns and track them. They're also asking that they receive some sort of response, that the community receives a response and a communication that these issues are being worked on. They're asking that you hold landlords who take advantage of the voucher housing program accountable. And lastly, that you invest in programs that educate tenants on essential community behaviors, such as properly disposing of trash, respecting others, not destroying property, and most importantly, being a good neighbor. I do want to note finally that I want to commend Mr. Anton Shaw, who recently attended our June Single Member District Meeting. Mr. Shaw has been responsive, helpful, engaging, and genuinely wants to make a change. He made some suggestions and proposed some ideas during our meeting, which all of the community members who were in attendance were appreciative and receptive of. I hope that you will support Mr. Shaw in his efforts so that we can get our community and our neighborhood, specifically this one area in LeMond, back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Chairman, that concludes our testimony.
Okay, thank, thank all of you who provided testimony today. There are a number of things that we need to follow. There are a number of things that we need to follow up. Teresa, is, is your hand up? Was that from previous? Commissioner Silla?
Sorry about that. I was looking for the, I got lost with the unmute button. That must have been from previous hand raised.
So we're, we're going to change the agenda order a little bit and move on to resolutions. We're going to start with Resolution 24-29. And this is to, this is a resolution to provide a limited preference for thirteen hundred families who, whose participation in the Family Rehousing Stabilization Program is ending. I'm going to ask our General Counsel, Amy, to provide an overview of that resolution.
Sure. So, as, as the Chair noted, this is, this is a resolution to address the, up to thirteen hundred folks who are being terminated from the FRSP program in the May, June, and July of this, of this year. It would establish a special preference for, for those folks to receive vouchers, assuming that they qualify for the housing, the federal housing choice voucher program. I, I do want to, to note in case it's helpful, because obviously we did receive some, some comments about this and, and concerns about the impact of folks on our waiting list, that we have recently polled nineteen thousand people from our current waiting list. And so we have nineteen thousand folks who are presently in some stage of, of, you know, potentially getting a voucher. They're, they're either in an eligibility review. They have a voucher and are looking for, for units, or, you know, they're hopefully getting ready to respond to the, the waitlist, the notification that they were pulled from, from, from the waitlist. So we, if, if the preference is adopted, I want to, I just, I just want to note that we, you know, we do have sort of existing waitlist folks who are also being addressed simultaneously. The other thing I should note is that we, you know, we did put this out for a thirty-day public comment. We had a, a public hearing to, to receive verbal testimony, and we also solicited written testimony from, from anyone who was interested in commenting in response to both the public hearing as well as the, the comments received. We made some modifications to the language to, to, to clarify that the, in, in, well, I guess, two main things, you know, one, we removed the good standing requirement, which was one of the, the requests from advocates who commented. And then we thought that it was a good standing requirement for folks to be in good standing with DHS. We also clarified that this would apply to folks who have already been terminated from the program, say in May or June or, or July. So with that, I'm going to ask if there are questions.
Questions, comments from the board members?
Commissioner Harris, I have a question. So you mentioned about the nineteen thousand waitlisted residents who have been pulled. There's an actual breakdown, and currently there are, that's a nice piece of number of pending and processed. But all of the other categories, what I'm looking at, what I've seen, doesn't state that they are in the process of voucher-ing up or have been approved for the vouchers. So I just want to be clear, when we speak about what we've done, or what Housing Authority has done, that's not an accurate number of residents who are on that waitlist they're being addressed. We're not addressing all eighteen for multiple reasons, whether we can reach them or whether we can't, whether they've been contacted a few times or they've declined and said that they no longer need it. There's a bunch of reasons, but there's also a big chunk of these residents that we've not yet actually touched and been able to confirm either way. That's fair to say, correct?
I'm going to ask our voucher. Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure I'm giving accurate information. So Anton, that is correct.
So yes, you are correct. However, the nineteen, it's actually nineteen thousand five fifty-four that we touched. Do you have a, quite a panel or not being eligible? And we also have quite a bit, the five thousand seven, eight, well, who did not respond. So those individuals still placed back on the waitlist because they may come back, let's say, six months or a year from now to say, I didn't get my notice. I'd like to receive a voucher. So those, what you just said, ma'am, was totally correct.
Okay, and also just to confirm, there are no current waitlist residents who have not been contacted.
We still have the waitlist.
Yeah, I guess, because I don't see that, you know, I don't view that. So I guess the wordplay is a little different. I want to make sure I understand. I was right the first time. Okay.
So the nineteen thousand have been contacted from the waiting list just this year, right? That's since, what, what's the timeframe?
In the past year.
So in the past, in the past year. And then, and those, those nineteen thousand are in some stage of the process. And then there are another eighteen thousand still on the waiting list that have not been contacted.
Thank you.
Can I, okay. So, you know, from the get-go, I think I've been pretty clear about my concerns. One, that it does feel unfair to people on the existing waiting list. And number two, I've been anxious about the amount of time that this is going to take the staff to manage when it could potentially be better spent fixing the fundamental flaws that we are seeing in the bathroom program. And I continue to have those concerns. I, I appreciate some of the comments we got today in feeling, you know, with, I think one of them said that it's, it feels like we're bailing out a failed policy. And I, I can't help but share to some degree that concern. And I guess, I, I would ask, you know, the council and DHS, to the extent they're paying attention to this conversation, I would really ask them to take a really good, hard look at Rapid Rehousing and FRSP and see if it is set up to succeed or if it is set up to put families in exactly the same position that their predecessors are in right now. Because I, I don't, I don't have a ton of confidence that we're not going to get the same request in a year or so. Some of my initial frustration had also been around this. Initially, I think there was some suggestion that potentially we could get through the entire waiting list and take care of these families, and we had enough vouchers to do that. And the, the staff has modeled out really in a, in a thoughtful way based on what their experience is in terms of people responding to the waiting list and determinations of eligibility. And I think that, you know, we can now see that that is not the case, that we can, at least for now, get through about nineteen thousand folks. That leaves about eighteen thousand folks kind of in limbo or farther down the list, as it were. And, yeah, I'm uncomfortable with it. But with all that said, I do feel a bit trapped between a rock and a hard place. I don't like agreeing to this resolution, but I'm going to agree, support this resolution. Because the alternative just feels unacceptable. And I just, I don't know that we can, at, at least that I, in good conscience, could not want to support these families that otherwise would potentially be homeless as their eligibility has ended. So that's my soliloquy, and I'll stop there.
Commissioner.
If I could, so thank you for those comments. And I appreciate all the discussion and the hard work that the staff has done, that the board has done, and really digging into this. I was really pleased with the discussion I had with Anton and Hamra the other day about all of the work that he is doing to improve the voucher program. And I think a lot of what he's going to put into place makes, there's very common sense changes. They will improve the customer service, and there'll be, you know, actual timelines that we can hold people to as part of the process, which is really, really critical. I also think that, to your point, we are in a tough spot because we do have this situation that has unfolded largely because of just buildup throughout the pandemic, right? A program that was never designed to be able to support people for perpetuity in affordable housing. We had, you know, restrictions for like three years in terms of being able to move people out, in terms of people being able to get jobs, and then we're faced with this reality. So I don't think it's the long-term solution. I think it's the solution for right now. And I really look forward to the discussions with the Housing Authority and with us as a board for how we manage our waitlist going forward. Because my other problem is that this waitlist closed in 2013. There are people right now that were never eligible to get on it in the first place, even in 2013, who might need help now. So to me, it is a very flawed metric of actual need. And I really want us to think, and I know the staff wants to think, and we want to think about a list that can, a, a way to help people prioritize in more real time. Because the way we've done it, it has not worked, right? They're like, the fact that we're pouring nineteen thousand people right now is indicative that it does not work. So I do think that we have this unique moment where we can assist, and we can also change ourselves going forward so that we are better able to respond to who we need to serve, which is low-income residents throughout the city. So I will also be supporting the resolution today.
Commissioner Silla, pass her hand up.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Skinner. I, I, I want to, I have very significant concerns. But first and foremost, I do want to, I, I do appreciate the mayoral request to support families that are exiting homelessness. The, the administration's interest and unwavering support for. The, the, the administration's interest and unwavering support for families experiencing homelessness, families at risk of homelessness is something that I greatly appreciate. I also want to appreciate Director Padigru's responsiveness to the ask and his immediate orientation towards partnership and problem solving and resolution. I do, I will be voting against the, against moving forward and against implementing this preference. And I want to make sure that, like, I, I want to be clear and explicit about the concerns that I have around where we are headed, just to make sure that we, regardless of the outcomes of today, are moving on track to resolve the concerns that I want to flag here. It, I, while I sympathize with families exiting FRSP, I recognize there is a difference between families that are actually experiencing homelessness, individuals that are actually experiencing homelessness versus those that are facing housing instability and that are at risk of eviction, which is likely what is going to happen when families exit rapid rehousing. And some have already exited rapid rehousing, but it's not automatic that families become homeless. What is striking to me is that there are, that the housing authority is responsible for supporting people that are currently experiencing homelessness. And so I feel that it is absolutely critical that the primary focus of DC Housing Authority needs to be on shoring up all of the services that it's currently providing because it is failing people that are currently experiencing homelessness, that are currently relying on LRSP to get them into housing off the streets, off of our shelters. And so until we shore up that program and until we are seeing the kinds of outcomes that we need to see, I think this is us taking our eyes off the ball. Additionally, the kinds of expedited, expedited service, awareness, attention, and even the fact that we are elevating families that are based on data sharing agreement, some of whom are actually linked to public housing waitlist. We are, we are not giving those same kinds of preferences for people that are currently experiencing homelessness and that are on the HCVP waitlist or the public housing waitlist. And based on the update that the director gave us, I think it is fair to expect and assume that it is going to take a while for us to fully serve the people on the public housing waitlist. And to the extent that we have people experiencing homelessness on that waitlist now, I, I feel that that is who we should be prioritizing for immediate elevation to HCVP vouchers and getting the people that are actually on our streets and in our shelters into housing. And so these are the kinds of considerations that I think make this a very complicated and difficult decision. I, 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 I want to flag that there, I do have some issues with how this partnership is being framed by some of the testimonies that we heard. We are, and I, and I, and I do want to speak against that a little bit because I do appreciate that the DC Housing Authority is critical to homeless services, that these families are also families, many of whom overlap with our public housing and our HCVP lists. And so I don't, whatever the outcomes of the decision are today, I, I want it to be recognized that DHS and the district are, need to, of course, be working in partnership. The housing authority is the largest provider of affordable housing for the district, for our families and need for individuals that are experiencing homelessness. So I don't want, I don't want this project, even as I am indicating that I, I think, I think we need to be taking a different route. I don't want this to be characterized as bailing DHS out or, you know, we made deliberate policy decisions based on the resources that are available to us to have a short-term rental assistance program in terms of rapid rehousing. So I also want to speak a little bit to the fact that it may well be true that short-term rental assistance leaves families needing more. Yep, let me stop. Sorry about that.
Want to give some of the other commissioners who haven't spoken a chance to speak, and then we can come back to you, let you finish up. But I want to make sure what gets a chance to speak. So are there any other commissioners, Commissioner Lee, Commissioner Jones? Have any, any comments? So, I mean.
I'd like to say one thing with this. Commissioner Harris, I just want to piggyback on Commissioner Sella was saying, I totally agree. And I appreciate you for putting that in words for not just only myself was unable to speak out verbally, but I definitely agree with the other commissioners as well. It's a hard decision. We are not, not wanting to work closely with any other programs outside of ours. But being a former long-term voucher holder, I cannot in good faith vote yes for this. Because if I was still waiting on that waiting list, I know what, how I would feel. And I know that it will be letters flying off everywhere that wouldn't do anything, you know, but just to, to speak my concern. So just wanted to put that out there. I just think we should be able to address the current residents. And because of the pause, the change in the timeframe, if we can't do it simultaneously, that's actually what forced me to change to keep with my initial thoughts and feelings. Sorry.
So, so just, just to sum up, I mean, we've heard a lot of different comments today. And there's no question, this is a, a difficult decision. These are hard choices, hard policy choices that the mayor has to make, the council has to make in a body like this, like this board has to make as we try to implement these various policies and, and, you know, stick to our mission of trying to, to house very low income populations. Having said that, that I think, you know, in my mind, it comes down to, is this the right thing to do? And in the context, I would say yes. I think, again, that we can use some of our resources to assist the families who will be transitioning off of this program. But then, and again, I, I just want to emphasize again that we are still working with people who've been on the waiting list. We have nineteen thousand people pulled and they are in various stages of processing. So it's not like we're not addressing the waiting list at all. So I just want to be, be clear on that. So with that, I'm, I'm going to just close, close out the discussion and call for a motion on the resolution. I'm sorry, Commissioner Dickerson, did you have?
Yeah, I just wanted, I'm in favor of this resolution with all the reservations and questions that go with it. But I, one, one area that has not been addressed is what we're, we're just thinking of what, of getting people in a unit, getting a roof over people's heads who have been, who are homeless, who are, and they have a lot of other needs. This is not just, this is an issue of housing. This is a whole issue of quality of life and ability of people to improve their lives and to take a different direction and to move forward. So I hope that we're not just sticking people in a, in a house, in a roof, you know, with a place with a roof over their head. And then that's it. And that's the number. I'm hoping that we really address needs that help people move forward, move up and realize the great potential in their lives and their children's lives, et cetera. So that's my comment, but I, I am voting for it.
So, so with that, I'll call for a motion.
Can I make one, just a very, very quick, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify a piece of information, which is helpful to anyone who's interested. Is that the, the model, first I want to appreciate the staff for the model. The model shows that we will have more information in early 2025. And I would ask the staff to keep us posted on how the model is playing out in reality. Because it is possible, possible that we might be able to reopen, not reopen, but go to the list again as early as early 25. It's, it's not, this isn't forever, but so just wanted to say.
Okay. Now can I get a?
I move second.
It's been moved in second on Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-nine. We'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
No.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sella?
No.
And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Have six yeses, two noes, a resolution, a pro.
Okay, thank you. Again, these are really difficult decisions and hard choices, but I guess that's why we get paid bucks. Okay. Was there anything else from, so we started with the resolution and I'm kind of trying to essentially combine the resolutions with the committee reports. Anything, this was heard at the Operation of Administrative Services Committee, any other report from that committee?
That was, that was, that was the big discussion. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So then we'll move on to Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eight, which is the Moving to Work Plan.
Hi, it's Amy Glassman. I'm going to present this one as well. The, the fiscal year 2025 Moving to Work Plan was put out for, for public comment for thirty days. We had a public hearing during that period. We also met with the, the Citywide, the Resident Advisory Board. During both meetings, we received, you know, verbal comments. We also solicited written comments and received comments as well. The, the updated plan does reflect, you know, but summarizes the comments received and sort of responds to them. But it also reflects some edits in response to that. And, and I'll, you know, I think some of it was echoed in the testimony and I'll just briefly, I know we're, I know we've had a lot of discussions. So I'll just briefly note, I think the original draft that we put out suggested that we were repositioning the entire portfolio in the next fiscal year. And we have sought to clarify that that is, that is not the case. You know, this is a longer term project and including a, a development, you know, property that we think needs to be repositioned and developed in the future, including it in the MTW plan is just really the first step. It will be consistent with the development and the repositioning principles that the board has adopted. There will be some resident community engagement that, that follows as well. So I just wanted to, to mention that.
So, so I guess I'm concerned that the revised version still includes all of those properties that's being repositioned in FY 2025, right?
I mean. It, it's been updated to clarify that, that we're listing them because we need to administratively in order to start any processes such as submitting certain applications to HUD. But, but we tried to add language and I, so I'm going to say this, you know, publicly as well. But, you know, we, we tried to add language to clarify that it doesn't mean we're repositioning everything in 2025.
That was one of the things that jumped out at me when I read.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we've certainly tried to revise it to make that more clear, but I wanted to make the public statement as well.
Right. Because a couple of people mentioned that in their testimony. Right.
Right. And that's just for the public and for us, then why put it in like that, right? If it's not the, if there's so many more steps to go through, why take this approach?
In, in order to submit any kind of application to HUD for whether it's for a RAD, whether it's for a Section 18 disposition, we have to include it in our annual plan. And so, you know, obviously we have some Section 18 applications that were approved at the last meeting. We, you know, and, and that's naturally the order in which we're redeveloping, as we discussed last time. But, but it's, it's, it's to make sure that we're at least in a position that we can submit applications. And again, if, if it's something we haven't already submitted, the board has to approve it. There's resident consultation in connection with that. There's, there's public process. So I'm just, it's sort of the administrative first step.
So, so since they're all included, that gives us the, the opportunity or the leeway to, based on some process or some analysis, select which ones we want to ultimately put forward in priority, whatever priority we have.
Right. But that's not the, right, we, the priority hasn't necessarily been established here. Right, right.
So may I ask a question in transparency? I heard you say 2025, but in really reality, will all the properties eventually be repositioned? I think that's what the public want to know, what I want to know. Is that a question that you can answer now? If not now, then maybe later. But I think that is the concern.
Can I turn that over? I mean.
So, so the short answer is we don't know.
Okay.
Again, we will be assessing as we go forward. And again, as we alluded to, I know people have concerns about resident rights. And so we're going to make sure that we sit down with residents and make sure, we start with the principles, but resident rights. So we understand what their concerns are and make sure that we take care of residents before. But also it's, it's a long, it's going to be a long period of time where we're going to be beat a lot. Talk about any ideas that are coming out of pipeline on where we are. So, but to answer that question about all of it now, everybody tells you that they're off the talking about because we don't know. Things could change, you know, the way so COVID coming. I mean, so my point is that I tell people when they start looking down toward the road, there's a lot of properties, number one. And, you know, it's going to take a lot of capacity and bandwidth to even deal with the ones that we have.
A lot of money.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, so I hate to say this, I promise that not my lifetime, right? I mean, it's my point is that it's going to be a while. So no, we don't know.
I mean, and what I would say from the committee's perspective is we've asked the staff to sort of go through this process that they're going through. And then next year, start to think about a, a plan that would sort of talk about sequencing. And so maybe we can't put hard years on things because for a lot of the reasons we just alluded to, but at least we could start to think about what are the ones that we want to get to in the shorter term and the longer term, given the state of the conditions. Okay. So, yeah.
I like to wait for some everybody.
Um, just, I wanted to make just two quick points. One, I just will say it is a little frustrating sometimes when we get feedback about, don't Section 18, don't RAD, don't RAD blend it. Because what I, what I don't hear in that is the struggle and responsibility that we as a board have, which is to make things better for our residents. And we are combating decades of federal investment, if not neglect, I mean, disinvestment, sorry, disinvestment and neglect of, of, in, in, in public housing. And so we have a limited number of tools in the toolbox that we can bring to, to try to address that problem. So for someone to say, you got to make things better, but you can't use these tools is a little frustrating, right? Because we don't have other tools. So that, that is point number one. The other point number two is I think we did get some helpful feedback that I think is going to help the board focus on tenant rights. And I think one of the things that we want to wrestle with is we know that RAD guarantees certain rights. I think we've adopted some redevelopment principles that were intended to guarantee resident rights. I think we want to give a hard look at whether we should potentially extend some of those rights to, to places voluntarily, even when it's not necessarily required, because it's the right, that we think it's the right thing to do. So I, I do appreciate that feedback. And I'm heartened to hear after some initial conversation with staff that they're thinking along the same lines. So I, I think that there may be more alignment between us and some of the comments we got than, that, that people may fear. So I, I appreciate that feedback and then.
Commissioner Silla has a comment, a question.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Blackson asked me to communicate, to read a letter from resident leaders of multiple DC public housing properties. And I, because of the length of the letter, I, I want to at least call out a couple of areas of concern that are articulated by the resident leaders and, and then also submit to the board the letter. The primary concern was around insufficient time allocated for reviewing the plan. Residents thought a thirty day period was inadequate and wanted the timeframe to be extended to at least sixty to ninety days. They feel that they are excluded from the planning process of the Move to Work Plan. and, uh, really want to have the time, uh, to, uh, think through what the implications of the Move to Work Plan are. They are flagging that how DC Housing Authority communicates information to residents and leaders is, uh, not satisfactory, uh, that DC Housing Authority needs to use more platforms. And they suggest a variety of ways in which the DC Housing Authority should be proactively, um, putting plans in front of, um, resident leaders and, uh, residents. As I'm scanning through, they, they have very specific kinds of, um, uh, objections and concerns relative to the, um, recovery plan as well. They feel that there is a planned removal of public housing units, um, during, um, the fiscal year and that that raises significant concerns for them. So I, I think again, it's this conversion. They're afraid that the DC Housing Authority portfolio has already seen numerous properties that have been lost through sales, redevelopment, or other means. And so, uh, they are concerned that we are not preserving, um, public housing, uh, in the plan, but rather that this really changes, um, uh, the nature of the properties that are being, um, managed by, um, DC Housing Authority. They're concerned about new development and demolition of properties, that redevelopment has had an outsized impact in terms of utility bills for residents, and so they're really concerned about this direction. They highlight that one for one replacement doesn't feel like it's working, that it's a promise that's often not fulfilled. And ultimately, whatever the plan or the platform, they really want to revisit, revisit the dog policy and, uh, keep residents held accountable. So just wanted to highlight some of what I see conveyed. This comes from multiple DC Housing Authority public, um, housing properties. The names and properties can be sent if needed for the record, but otherwise, um, they indicate a fear of retaliation and hesitate, hesitation to share contact information.
And, and I, I just want to note that that is one of the public, we, the, we did receive that as a public comment and, um, the letter has been reviewed closely by, um, by, by staff. So if that's helpful, I just want to make sure you all know that, that really was considered a connection.
So I, I have, um, a process question. When, when is timing in terms of, you know, the indication, uh, just now about additional time to review? So help us to understand the process in terms of the timeframe, uh, to do certain things. And will there be another opportunity to provide comments or input before this is sort of put to bed?
So the, um, candidly, the, so the MTW plan was put out for public comment in accordance with the, the HUD public comment requirements, right? And it was, um, the information about it being out and published was, um, I, I, I think done extensively and we definitely appreciate the feedback that people were concerned, you know, that, that there were some concerns that might be some additional ways we can, um, pu- put that out. But, um, yeah, I mean, if, if, you know, in terms of, I, I think a lot of the concerns raised in, in those comments deal with the repositioning and the redevelopment, utility costs, you know, how we're structuring utilities if we're redeveloping a site, that, that sort of thing. And, and in, and, and that is part of the ongoing consultation that, um, that Director Pettigrew mentioned, that, you know, there will be a lot of, um, of, of consultation and off, you know, and, and, and opportunities for feedback, both in terms of what any kind of redevelopment looks like, um, right? The physical, the physical piece, but then also the, the resident rights and the, and, and that piece.
So also, the deadline is July fifteenth. Either we meet it or we don't for the MTW plan, just so you know.
That, that's to submit it to HUD?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
What, what happens if we miss the deadline or don't submit it?
Grace, Grace, you are, I mean, we're, you're obligated under our agreement with HUD to submit it, to submit it timely. So if, if we can submit it timely, we would love to.
Okay, so, so again, going back to the question that I thought I asked, what, what other opportunities will there be going forward to change? So we submit this to HUD and HUD, I'm, I'm not sure, does that have to, has to, quote, approve it? Or they just agree to send it?
So HUD will review the plan, they will get back to us with any questions or feedback as well. So in many years, we have to submit a revision to address the HUD comments as well. So, so there, there's not usually another public consultation in connection with the plan. And that's why I was talking about the fact that, that, you know, but that the contents of the plan, the things that we actually want to do, you know, will involve a lot of public consultation, even though.
So, but it is, it is an annual plan, so we'll do it again next year.
Yep.
So, and so many of the, the things that, uh, residents are talking about or others testified are talking about, we can address again next year.
Correct.
Let me, let me ask a follow-up to that. The, the thought of having it available for public comment longer, and I know that we have it available based on the HUD guidelines, is there anything that prevents us from, I know that it's a time-taking process to pull it together. Is there anything that prevents us from making it available for public comment long?
No, we could, it, it's, it's just, it's a function of when we're able to, to, to get it, you know, to put it together. But yes, yes, there's not, can always legally.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I'm just, we're not changing the thirty percent of one's income. The issue, the fear of affordability is still, is a fear, but we're not really changing the percentages of what people have to pay, correct?
Correct, and, 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 and I don't think this fully addresses the concerns about utilities candidly, but there is a, if, if one is, for example, converts to project-based vouchers, RAD or otherwise, there is a, you know, essentially a utility allowance that's, that's factored into the tenant portion of the rent payment. So if a tenant were responsible for their own utilities, their monthly payment of rent would actually be a little bit lower in, in an effort to ensure that they have more income to, to pay for utilities, right? But, but that doesn't fully, I, I recognize that's a longer discussion as well.
Yeah, because that is a concern. And while that sounds good, even if the rent is lower, what happens like in the summertime when the electric is higher? What happens in the wintertime when the heat is higher? What happens when you're including water? You see, I'm a resident, I am a public house resident, let me make that fact clear. And I understand the concerns because I feel the concerns, you know? It's like, I'm gonna be blunt here, like you just come in, you're, like, all this discussion, we're talking about redeveloping this and redeveloping that. I live at eleven R Street, where former Commissioner Kenneth Council said, "We had a fire two years ago and my building is still suffering. We have good apartments, but you got all these millions." And just keep it real, Rosa, you got these vouchers to give DHS. How many people in my building has been given that opportunity? Every time I come in the door, you can see the smoke, you can see the damage. They're large, wonderful apartments, but we are suffering. And we talked about that Melville and you just took it and threw it and I don't hear no more. I'm living it every day and I have to sit here patiently and smile and wait until you're ready to discuss how my living condition is unsatisfactory. And if I feel this way, and I'm sitting here as a commissioner allegedly with powers, how do you think the residents feel? So what we're saying, stop smokescreening us and gaslighting us. Don't tell me about an allowance for utility. You have people that have been generations of public housing. I'm not one, but I'm still gonna speak up for them. They don't know how to pay utilities. And even though you make this package look good and shiny bees that you're selling, isn't that how they got Manhattan? Because you make everything look shiny. We want a seat at the table when you're talking with your advocates. The advocate can't speak to me or for me. I'm a resident, I got the best experience in this whole room because I'm a public house resident. Don't make decisions for me, then come back and tell me under this guideline that according, you're only doing it because this is a regulation. We want to know ahead of time about, yes, I'm on the citywide, I want to know ahead of time. I want to get the facts, how far, how much time do you guys have? When you get it, when you sit there and you decide, we need to do this, we need to fix that. Did you get any input from the residents? So that's what I heard today from residents. We want, before you make a decision that will affect the rest of my life, give me at least the courtesy that pretend you care enough to ask. And that's what's getting residents out of, um, I get emotional, I'm sorry, getting us so frustrated because you're making these decisions. And again, with a clear face, you're telling me all these resolutions, all these millions of dollars, but I'm still living in an apartment building with fire stains with three or four apartments that have been just gutted out. And no one has said anything about that. That's what gets us upset and I'm through.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well said.
Can I, can I ask, I, I think it's, it does feel like this was a little rushed. And I, we, and also, I know you guys were dealing with the recovery plan and everything else we're all dealing with, but was it a little rushed this year and as opposed to past years, to the extent that you all know? And can we map out a process next year where there's a little bit more opportunity to slow it down a little? Because every time we speed up, that's when people get their backs up.
I, I can't speak to prior years, I mean, right, I mean, unfortunately, um, I mean, but, but I mean, to answer, I think you're, you know, I, I, in terms of it, it going out, you know, anyway, I mean, this is a new administration, so, so everything feels like a rush, I'll be honest. And, and, you know, it's certainly not our intent. But, I mean, to answer your question, can it, can it be a little different next year? Absolutely, I mean, I think that's.
If you could start thinking now about like, what, how do we start this process earlier so that we don't?
So, so I think it, it all ties together, the, the Moving to Work Plan, the Recovery Plan, Admin, ACOB, all of that stuff all, all ties together. And we've got to make sure that, that everything, uh, is in sync and that we're saying the same thing consistently in all of our various platforms, uh, that we, we, we have a consistent message of this is where we're going, this is what we're trying to do. But, um, just, just to be, to be clear, um, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about the repositioning and, and, uh, as the Commissioner said, you know, things have happened over the years, you know, going back several years. And, you know, somebody talked about the Parkport experience and we got the Barry Farm experience and so forth. And, you know, Director Pettigrew, when he came on board, uh, you know, made a commitment that things are gonna be different. And I think, you know, we got a lot of feedback from residents that they feel that he's made a difference. And, uh, going forward, we're gonna have to make a bigger difference. But right now, we're still in the, you know, sort of the finding out and the analysis mode. And in some cases, we really don't know what we're gonna do, where we're gonna go. But I think the director will agree with me and I think the rest of the board will agree. Once we do start making decisions, we're gonna bring the residents in and involve the residents. So some, some things are out of our control. You know, if you, um, I listened to a, a, a session from Urban Institute about two weeks ago about basically the future of public housing. So for a large public housing authorities like, like us, that have hundreds of millions of dollars worth of capital improvements to do, we, we're, we have limited choices. I mean, you know, nobody's gonna print money and give it to us so we can just fix up every building. So we have certain tools that we have to work with. And, and, you know, the folks in the industry are constantly thinking through, trying to come up with new methods and new ways of raising capital so we could do these things. But there, there's just a limited, a, a number of things that we can do. And for, for us, I think the, the repositioning through RAD or, or Section eighteen, uh, that's it. And then we have to work with, uh, DHCD and the DC Housing Finance Agency to get tax credits and bonds so we can raise capital to do these things. But, um, so, so I, all I want to say is, we're still at the very, very early stages of this repositioning discussion. So we don't know for, uh, building by building, uh, for the most part, where we're gonna go and how we're gonna do it. But the residents will be involved and there'll be numerous meetings, uh, on the, the plan, the, the actual physical plan and layout and what's gonna happen, things about the number of units, unit sizes and so forth. Because I know that a big concern that people bring up, I know they want more family units, we hear that, uh, at every meeting, we need more family units. So we have to figure out a way, uh, to get those in to the plans. And again, to be able to get the, the financing to make all of this stuff, uh, happen. So, um, I just want to say that, you know, I think again, the director's committed, the board is committed to putting residents first and continuing to work with the residents on everything that we do going forward.
I'd like to say too, that the mayor is committed. She's, she put this together and I, I know she's committed as well.
And the city council, Commissioner Reed.
I was wondering if there's, to, to your point, uh, Chairman and Commissioner Burbidge also raised, is there communication we can put together for residents about, you know, here's, here's what we did, here's why, and here's what you can expect going forward? Because we all kind of know. I just don't know if the residents know, and maybe if we put it in writing, here, here are the opportunities you'll have to engage before any final decisions are made that at least would leave, maybe give people, they wouldn't be just wondering and coming up with things because of a lack of information.
Commissioner Harris, um, we find ourselves in the same position a lot when it comes to, um, decisions that we have to make for HUD regulations just to get an approval. And if we make it abundantly clear to our residents that, hey, we're not actually doing anything right now, this is our plan, but we can't even think or talk about it until HUD lets us, lets us say, okay, this looks good, let me know if you're in change, any changes. And then after we get the okay from HUD, then we can explain, here are the things we're gonna put into place. I know it's in there in pieces and things like that, but everyone doesn't comprehend the same way as we all comprehend. We, we spent a lot of time with this for a lot of high-volume amendment, not amendments, um, resolutions that we have to go through. I don't mind talking, I like to talk, but again, it will help the residents. Hey, we're gonna take all your questions, hey, we're gonna, maybe we, we would do a notification, nine, I was it, sixty days? When it comes to making decisions for each property that we have plans to do things with, to hear your input. But this is just to get HUD to say, you know what, DC? You guys are good to go with some of these, um, updates that you're interested in doing. Come back to me when you have something in hard form that you want to move forward with. And I don't think everyone will be so upset, but they will remind us that they need to be included.
Right, absolutely. Any further discussion? This is what, Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eight to work. Commissioner Lee, you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
No comments?
No comments, thank you.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eight to approve the, uh, FY twenty-five Work Plan.
It's on my side.
Roll call vote.
Sure, Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
The resolutions are approved.
Okay, thank you. So then I'm gonna go to, uh, Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-three. And in that context, I'm gonna ask, um, Commissioner Reed to give a report for the Budget Finance Committee.
Sure, oh, thank you, Chairman. And so I'm gonna turn to, uh, Batuna, our auditor, in just a minute, just to give an overview of the policy. But basically what we're presenting to you all, recommending to you all to adopt it as an anti-fraud policy that would cover the agency, this is just a very good thing to have. As public stewards, we should not be engaging in fraud. Um, and I think Batuna and, and the team have done a really good job at outlining a policy that is clear and that communicates what the expectations are, um, for the agency and for those that work with the agency. those that work with the agency. So Patuna, if you could just give a very brief overview and then, do you have any questions?
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. Regardless of our challenges, DCHA wants to demonstrate that we are committed to upholding the highest level of ethical standards in all areas of our operations. Therefore, all personnel, contractors, and beneficiaries have a duty to help create and maintain a culture of integrity and opposition to fraud, waste, abuse, and mismanagement. With the implementation of this resolution, DCHA's objective is to reduce fraud events to the lowest extent possible to ensure the most effective and efficient use of our funds and resources. The Office of Audit and Compliance will spearhead the training needed to ensure a smooth implementation of this policy and shall report our progress in our monthly Budget Audit and Finance Committee meetings. Further, there is no magic document that guarantees that we will always be in compliance and reduces fraud, but this resolution is a step in the right direction to help establish an anti-fraud culture covering our work practices and business ethics.
Thank you, Patuna. Would that be the resolution?
Okay. So I've been on the board for, you know, three years now, and I know we've talked about this since I first got here. So Ms. Cooper and our team, I just want to thank you for getting this to the finish line. I know it's been hard work and a difficult process, but we really appreciate the work that you've done, and thank you again. Okay, so it's been moved, and is there a second for the motion? Second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. So this is a roll call vote for Resolution 24-33 to adopt the anti-fraud policy.
Sure. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
And Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Yes, seven yeses, the resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm going to ask Commissioner Murphy, is there, if there is a report from the Capital Projects Committee?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing to report, and my understanding is Resident Services Committee did not meet this month, so this will report Resident Services. So with that, I think we've gone through all of our agenda items, and now it's Commissioners' time, so we can go around. Commissioners, have any comments, thoughts? We've had a lot of good discussion today.
And I just want to, I just wanted to share one thing, which is our Deputy Mayor for Public Safety and Justice, which oversees all of our public safety agencies, stopped by my office the other day just to say how easy and pleased she is to be working with DCHA and the team. I understand there's been a lot of collaboration to set up a lot of events and activities this summer on different properties, and they were just saying how great you all have been to work with, and they're looking forward to the partnership to make sure we calm down this summer. So, thank you.
Anything else?
I'd like to second that emotion. I think that the staff and the team and the board are doing a great job with all the stuff that we have to do. There's a lot to add, it's, it's going to take one at a time. In AA and NA, we say, you know, one day at a time. So for me, it is that persistence that has to take place. And I know the director and the staff are just utterly committed to residents. I know the director's mind is of a resident, because he was one, he grew up in a public house, and he still is, before that goes. And so, you know, we've got a long way to go. It won't be overnight, but I do believe we're in taking steps in the right direction and moving in that direction. And I am, I, I feel good about where that that's happening. Now, plenty of things to do to make it better, but I want to congratulate y'all, because I know you work so hard at this.
So, thank you. With that being said, we will not have a meeting in August, so I want everyone to enjoy the rest of the summer, stay cool. Next board, Commissioner Reed, held on Wednesday, September 11, 2024, at 1:00 PM via WebEx. Information regarding reviewing or participating in the meeting will be found at our website, website, our email address is dchousing.gov. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
That meeting is adjourned. It is now 2:58 PM.
Chair?
Yes, my apologies, Chair. I had wanted to recommend or commend a couple of team members who followed up after the community event, and I wanted to flag that the work we are working with DBH to, and I've noted before that we have identified a couple of properties that are experiencing the highest level of overdoses, fatal overdoses and non-fatal overdoses as well. So I'm so grateful to Brian Harris, he's the Director of Resident Services, his team members, led by Fashad Taylor, Tyler, for partnering with DBH and looking to see how it is we can create a robust plan for preventing and reducing the number of overdoses that we are experiencing at DC Housing Authority properties. So I just, I wanted to call out some of the, the great team members and applaud them for their work with us.